We also can't see the slides anymore, those of us remotely.
Okay, good evening. It is Wednesday, January 24th, and we are meeting at the Middle High School Auditorium. And this is the Lunenburg School Committee. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join the Zoom meeting, the meeting ID is 7663167607. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get to our first item, which is public comment, I just have a little bit of a public comment of my own. We did change where we were meeting in anticipation that we would have more people than would comfortably fit inside the collaborative room. So I wish to thank the junior class play people who so very nicely ended their rehearsal a little bit early for us. And I would like to thank Dr. Burnham and her staff for moving the Zoom, which is difficult at best in the smaller room, to this big space. So I thank you for your patience. And I also want to state that I appreciate the public response to our budget discussion. I want to thank the public for coming out. I want to thank people that sent emails, whether to Dr. Burnham, to the LPS address, or sent them to me. We appreciate your comments. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome. Please remember, this is public comment and not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Now, this evening, Mr. Schoolenbrini is going to be keeping track of three minutes. Three minutes goes by quicker than you think, and he will let you know when your time is up. I also want to tell you that I am going to be noting the topics discussed in your comments, and during our budget presentation, we will address those comments. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. We can vote to waive that. This evening, do I have a motion from someone on the committee? Apparently not. Can you hear me, Mr. Leighton?
Now I can.
Okay, what we're trying to do is to extend public comments. And Mr. Beardmore made a motion. Mr. Schoolenbrini seconded, and we are doing a roll call vote.
Thank you.
So.
Mrs. Przowski?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes. So what we're going to do is we will take one person from the auditorium, and then one person to comment from Zoom. Dr. Burnham will keep track of the Zoom business. And if you wish to comment, there is a desk with a microphone there. And you can, just like town meeting, you can line up. Mrs. Gilman, you need to state your name and your address.
Yep. Press. Hold it till it's green.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, my name's Mandy Gilman. I am a resident here in Lunenburg, lifelong resident. I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader. And I come here as a parent and also as someone who has worked in government in the past. Just a few things, I know many of you agree, but the current shortfall is really alarming, and it's really disappointing that this has appeared to be something that we have found out about so suddenly, or at least shared publicly so suddenly. I do hope we think about while we're working this year, if this is going to be something we're going to have to keep addressing, because it seems like we should be planning for more than one year at a time. You know, my child didn't have kindergarten. He and his peers have really benefited from a lot of extra reading help. And I know that's one of the teachers and the specialties that's on the chopping block, and that's really alarming to me. He's doing pretty well, but he can still use the extra help. And I would say he's, by average, talking to other parents of third graders. It's a pretty average response I get. I'm hoping the school committee will consider things like transportation fees, look at sports fees, other options. And really connecting with our state officials feels like there's a disconnect with the legislature and the people in the legislature. You know, that is where more money is, and they can bring more money to the town. So we need to be begging them for more money. You know, I have friends who work in special ed, and many of the proposed cuts, they think, leave us open to litigation and large cost issues. And I guess I'm coming here asking the leadership of the schools and the school committee to be a champion for our students. And if what we need is more money from the town, we need you telling the town that as a united voice, and telling, you know, the finance committee and the selectmen that more money is needed, that what you are being offered right now is not enough. And if that means an override, that's something I think you need to consider. I know it's not going to be super popular with everyone, but we need to put it on the table, because cutting over 20 positions, in my opinion, and many parents in this room, is just not acceptable. People move to this town for the education, and it would be wildly disappointing if we aren't able to live up to our standards. Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Someone from Zoom, Dr. Burnham?
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
Is it possible to turn the camera so we can see who's speaking?
No.
No, we don't have anybody to work the camera.
Okay.
Sorry.
If anybody attending via Zoom has a question you can use, or a comment, you can use the raise hand feature.
So for anybody who may be wondering, and it's not on Zoom daily like I am, I believe if you click the reactions button, and then there is a hand raise on the upper, right above that, if you're on a Windows computer, and I assume it's something like that on a Mac.
We are not seeing anyone?
We are not.
On Zoom right now, so I will take another comment from the crowd here. Please state your name and address. You got to push that till it turns green.
Okay, Lou Franco, 250 Arbor Street. I just want to note, this is just a point of order, just to keep an eye on, people are trying to get in from the waiting room. I've seen them, so just, that's it. I saw there'd been people in the waiting room for this.
They're all in at this point.
That's all for now.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon or evening. My name's Michael Horunkiewicz, 165 Gilcrest Street. And I have a daughter who is 15 and a three-year-old son. So you could say that I'm invested in Lunenburg schools in both the short and long term. I also understand that all industries and services are facing the same economic pressures with rising labor expenses, record inflation, and other market factors, and that difficult decisions are being made in organizations across the country to combat these forces. Now, according to U.S. News and Reports, Lunenburg High School is ranked 67th out of 401 schools in Massachusetts. According to Massachusetts State Reports, Lunenburg's per pupil expenditure is listed 361 out of 401 districts in Massachusetts. This means that we're in the top 20% for school performance while being in the bottom 10% for spending. Now, I think that we should applaud that, because we're obviously getting more for less, and it's great that we can do so much with so little. But doesn't it also mean that we really can't afford to make cuts to essential personnel and services? I work for a local nonprofit healthcare organization, and we're facing the same pressures as our schools. But if we balance the budget by laying off doctors and nurses and shuttling essential services, then I would be out of a job and we would be out of business. The answer in these tough times is to take full stock of the business and get creative. Identify operational expenses that can be reduced. Take stock of nonessential personnel. Limit capital expenditures, and most importantly, identify additional revenue streams. Now, we appreciate the work done by the superintendent's team to prepare their recommendations, but I cannot support them. Academic teachers, guidance programs, music and arts programs, and school athletics are all essential to the school community, in my view. They literally are the products that the school sells. I believe we, as a town and community, must take a look at what can be done to support the school's budget, even if that means an increase in taxes or an impact on other town departments. It's what's best for our children and our own personal investment in this community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Are there any additional hands on Zoom at this time?
Hi, my name is Shoshana Mulay. I live at 139 Cove Road. My daughter is a senior in Lunenburg, and I have a son in middle school, and he goes to Sizer in Pittsburgh. The situation that our town is facing is a surprise and not a surprise. The specific numbers were a surprise to all of us. And I know that a lot of people have spoken in general and discussed that. I'm here because I am the president of the Music Aiders, which is the booster support group for the music program. Music has been a huge part of my family's life, and specifically for my daughter. She started out in kindergarten in Lunenburg, and there was only one year where there was no music, and we sent her to a private music program, because it was so important. She and a couple of other of the high school music kids also would like to speak. I don't know if that's going to impact my three minutes. The only other thing I have to say is that it seemed from the presentation that there was the idea of fairness and cutting a little bit of everything. I understand that perspective, however, I'm not sure how strategic it is. My particular interest in the music program, the cuts are very, very small dollar-wise, and they will have a huge impact on the future of the music program. Specifically, the fifth grade band program, that was, band and chorus, I'm sorry, that was reinstated a couple of years ago. And so now, the enrollment in middle school band and chorus is much higher than it was because of the fifth grade band program. Additionally, there's a proposed cut to the high school music teacher, which also is not a huge dollar amount. I do want to emphasize, though, the extreme importance of keeping the fifth grade band and chorus. Very small dollar, very big impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would suggest, I know that there are students who are here who are interested in speaking tonight, and I don't believe that our policy differentiates between students and adults.
No.
And therefore, they should be treated accordingly and be given the full three minutes, and we can move through them just like we would through the Zoom and through the auditorium.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Sophia Mulay. I live at 139 Cove Road.
And I'm Carol Horunkiewicz. I live at 165 Gilcrest Street.
I am a senior at Lunenburg High School, and I have been a member of the music department for eight years at this point. I started in the fifth grade when, you know, we had fifth grade band. And I can say without a doubt in my mind that without this program, I don't, I don't know how I would be today, but it was kind of my safe haven through high school, and it's where I can be myself. I consider it a home. And I know that if you got rid of that in fifth grade, things would drastically change. I mean, the year they did get rid of that, the program suffered, the numbers went down, and then they reinstated it. And right now, there are 40-plus kids in the seventh and eighth grade middle school band. I am Mr. Sheldon's step student, and I am with them every single day of the week, and I have been since September. And I know every one of these kids, and they are passionate, and they care, and they are dedicated, and this is their place. And they wouldn't have gotten here without the program early on in fifth grade and before that. And I just, I see it in them every day. And if any part of that was stripped from them, it would be, it would be different, and it would be detrimental. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I've had a similar experience. I'm a freshman, and this is my fifth year participating in the music program. I also direct a lot with the middle school students. In jazz band, I helped to run sectionals. But we've seen that these students are all very dedicated to this, and that, like she said, it is something that does change who you are as a person. You know, it's a passion for a lot of these kids. And this could be taking that away. There are also a lot of kids who have had to make sacrifices due to the scheduling to be a part of band. I have a friend who couldn't take honors bio this year. I wasn't able to take my Latin course regularly this year. And so taking away that program would kind of make those sacrifices obsolete. There would be no good reason for them anymore. And so if you were to take this away now, it would, it would kind of make a lot of things feel like worthless sacrifices.
Thank you.
All I have to say.
I believe we do have someone on the Zoom whose initials are KS. Would you please unmute, and you can give your statement? Please give your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Carrie Speck, and I live at 475 Reservoir Road. I have two children that who have got, who are in Lunenburg school system. My son is now a freshman at Monty Tech, and my daughter is a seventh grader. And my husband is actually a teacher at the high school. So we are very invested in the Lunenburg school system. I feel like I need to speak on behalf of the Special Education Department. I myself am in special education, and my husband is too. And the cuts to paraprofessionals is very concerning to me. They're the backbone of special education, and without them, the department cannot run. And I've been in a school that has not had a lot of paraprofessionals, and the students suffer. I feel like if we're looking to cut so many, it's going to really affect not only special education, but general education students and their ability to function in the classroom. I am also, in addition to the special education, with my daughter being in seventh grade, concerned about some of the cuts to foreign language and the middle school sports that really takes away some of the experiences that she's been really excited about. She's been practicing French for the last three years, hoping to take French, and was pretty devastated hearing that that might not be a possibility for her. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there. But in terms of special ed, I think we really need to consider what we can do to keep paraprofessionals, because they really are the people that run our program and make it work.
Thank you. Is there someone in the auditorium?
The green light, so you can hear me, right? Hi, I'm Mike Mack in 26 Courtland Circle, Lunenburg. Some of you may know me, I was former chair of the school committee and chairman of the school building committee. We faced this before in the past. There's just a couple of observations. One is, you know, there are things that we can't plan for, like the economy, tax revenues. Things that we can plan for, expenditures. At some point, you know, I think we need to reflect on some of the choices that were made that got us to this point. I think it's good to soul search from time to time. It is a fact that when we last faced this, I think, 2012, you know, a great deal of time was spent on trying to make sure that the classrooms were affected the least. Was there effect? Absolutely. There are always hard choices when these things happen. But we made choices like looking at fees, you know, like looking at, you know, other expense lines. We looked at administration. And I know that schools are incredibly complicated to run now, and state requirements are, you know, very demanding. But I think we have to, you know, look as hard as possible at areas that don't impact, you know, where the rubber meets the road, which is the teacher in the classroom. And so I'd encourage you to, you know, keep thinking about this idea that whatever we do, we want to drive as much dollars to the classrooms. That said, the last thing I want to say very quickly is there has been a structural problem with revenues in Lunenburg for years. We have not had, we've been held to a level of funding through the town that has not kept pace with all the expenses that have grown. Electricity has not gone up 2% a year. Personnel costs have not gone 2% a year. Insurance certainly hasn't gone up 2% a year. And I think that although it's unpopular, although it's difficult, although it'll take a great deal of effort and sales, that there must at some point be a plan to look for those additional town revenues. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. We see people on Zoom now. Laura, if you would like to unmute yourself?
Hi there. Thank you so much. It's Laura Berusian. I'm at 389 Malpus Road. I have a son who has special needs, 10th grade, and my daughter is eighth grade. And I just have to, I wanted to just, one second, everything that Shoshana Mulay shared about the music program. I have had the privilege of seeing the kids compete this past year, and they're just, they're tremendous. And losing that, that culture, that fit, that group that they have together would really be a loss, I think, for our community. They were at the football game where they were just playing their hearts out in the rain, and it's really something to see. So to have them come together, academically, the music programs support so much their math skills, their just, their leadership skills as well. So I'd really like to see if there are other ways that we can generate this, the types, the revenue that we need to support these programs. Also having a son with special needs and knowing that the town can step in and help me with that is really something. I think one of the things that we're seeing is just the impact on the band program of having it be a smaller program than maybe some other schools, and really seeing the impact of the COVID pandemic, and seeing that there's so many kids in the seventh and eighth grade that are coming up, that fifth grade program as well. These are the schools that represent us out in our community, the students that represent us. And I just really encourage the committee to advocate for additional funding from the town and other sources that we may be able to generate to support these programs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone in the auditorium that would like to speak?
My name is...
You have to hold it till it turns green.
It is green.
Okay, then you're set.
My name is Amy King, Free Gapes Place, Lunenburg. I have two students in the high school. Both of my students are student athletes who participate in three sports each. Each season, they participate in sports. I'd like to express my concern in itself about the budget and some of what other people have said about how do we have this type of a surprise, and that I think we really do need to look at the numbers and understand some of the increases. And looking at the high-level line items that Dr. Burnham provided, it's, we have a decrease in our salaries, but a very substantial increase in our expenses. And those aren't really laid out very well for us to understand what those increases are. So I think a little bit more, a little more sharing of the budget would be helpful for the analysis and for public comment. I haven't actually submitted a letter yet, because I really don't know what to say, because I'm trying to understand the numbers. The key point that I did want to speak to was the proposed cuts for the athletics department. I think that that is extremely egregious, considering the fact that what we're talking about is cutting the entire department. If we were to look at the fiscal year '23, school year, throughout the three seasons of sports, we had 45 to 53% of our students participating in high school sports. That's an extreme percentage of people who are, would be getting a very inequitable cut if we cut our athletic department. To Ms. Gilman's point, I'd like to stress as well, to make sure everyone remembers, our athletes pay substantial fees. If you were to look at the fiscal year '23 revenue that should have been collected for athletic fees, and I know this isn't 100% accurate because of people who may have waivers for fees, but that's $184,000 that can support our athletic budget. So I want to make sure that those factors are taken into consideration as we consider these cuts for athletics. I'd also like to point out the social, a social emotional benefit our athletes get from participating in... our athletes get from participating in well-managed sports. Without an athletic director, there can be a lot of chaos out there with scheduling, with busing, stress associated with getting to practices or games, or not practices, but to games on time. You know, the current athletic director and trainer that we have are phenomenal. If you were to understand their resume, we have a trainer that years ago used to be in professional support, an athletic director that has worked in a college atmosphere. They have significantly improved our athletic program in Lunenburg in the past two years. And I'm fearful of putting cuts like this on the table, that we could lose them. And that would not be fair to our students, 50% of our student population. You know, I think we need to think through some of the other benefits of athletics, of the academic motivation in my three minutes. Okay, I'm sorry. That's it. I think that we need to look at the whole budget. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. On Zoom, we have the next person up on Zoom. And your name, please, and address.
Hello, I'm Sandria Harp. My address is 20 Pratt Street in Lunenburg. I'm coming on here. My heart is beating out of my chest because I never do anything like this. And but I felt like I need to speak. I have a daughter and the special education program in the primary school. And I have a son who's a seventh grader. And, you know, I saw the proposed cuts to things in the special education department that really like shook my soul a little bit. Number one, cutting of the pairs. I think anybody who has any child in the special education program knows how important pairs are. Even when for the smaller kids, they're just imperative. And the fact that they're already not paid what they should be, but now we're trying to cut their positions is really disturbing to me. Also, I believe I saw on there maybe a cut for a BCBA, which like really surprised me that I think they're really essential. So I'm hoping that I misread that or that was the piece of misinformation. But those were some of the things that were really concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead. Your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Noah Lind. I live in, I live at 95 Belgrace Street, Lunenburg. I'm a freshman in high school and I've been in the music program for five years. I was in the fifth grade music program and it really inspired me to learn more about music and join the band. To hear that that very program that introduced me and many other kids, the music might be cut, breaks my heart. There aren't many of us, but we're dedicated and passionate. I really hope we can find other ways to meet our budget.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on Zoom? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, then in the auditorium.
Hi, Chris Sullivan, 108 Highland Street in Lunenburg. For me, I'll kind of echo a little bit of what Mrs. King was saying. The athletics cuts were really what stood out the most for me. It's the world that I understand in the school. It's what both my kids are involved in a lot with after-school activities. To see an entire department cut first didn't seem equitable. But the bigger thing for me that stood out and what I, you know, a big concern I have is the social emotional piece of what that means. I saw it during COVID. My daughter started in sixth grade. She did cross country. It was a great introduction to the middle school athletic program. We're hearing a lot about middle school kids that are involved in music, in sports, the confidence that it gives them, the confidence it gives them to come here and speak tonight. The confidence it gave my daughter to then take the next step and go out for high school sports. Unfortunately, a lot of the, when she was in sixth grade, the COVID cut a lot of that, the middle school sports after the fall. And that social emotional piece is what we really saw, that that confidence that she gained at the start of sixth grade completely went away. We found outlets outside of, outside of school to kind of bring some of that back for some of the kids for my son's grade, my daughter's grade. We found some outside soccer activities and so forth to kind of get that going and bring some of that social emotional connectivity back. These kids take a lot of pride, not just the athletes, but the students in general that show up and stand on the side of the track, stand in the bleachers, cheering their friends on. They're in the stands and the basketball courts. Those are outlets that these kids need. And to think that there's a possibility that an athletic program could be cut, not the program, excuse me, but the staff could be cut. And I have grave concerns about what that would mean to the overall quality of the program that these kids really use as a significant outlet after school. These kids show up day in, day out, put in the work. And their outlets that these kids rely on after school, in the evening, to understanding what it means to be a teammate, to be a friend, to take pride in the town and to come together and really, you know, be part of a community. So appreciate you taking that all into consideration.
Thank you. We have someone on Zoom with an iPhone? You can unmute?
Yes, Angel Wildus, 17... Angel Wildus, 17 Whitetail Crossing. I'd like to know how it is that we continue to cater and what amount has been spent on all of the diversity and equity trainings you have planned for this town because they cater to your political views that affect maybe 1% to 2% of students, yet you are okay with cutting sporting events and all of the sporting staff that caters to the majority of our students and is essential to their mental health? And I'd also like to know how you're okay cutting any teachers when we're in the worst economy right now and the worst inflation on record, but you, Kate, have taken over a 15% raise over the past three years?
Thank you.
Ashley Braun, 607 Reservoir Road. So I am the proud parent of a second grader. I think the reason a lot of us are on Zoom and a lot of us are here in this room is because we want the best opportunities for our children. And we talk about like when we wanted to fill out those college applications, music, sports, the ability to get the extra help from the special education program or any of the other teachers is vital for this school system. It's vital for this town. We are asking the school committee, the superintendent, to go back to the drawing board to look at how we can maybe avoid cutting some of this personnel and these programs. And if that means going to the state and asking for money or going to the town and asking for money, we're here to support you in that. I know I am. But we need some direct action steps. We need to know what opportunities are available. And I fully understand that you can apply for state aid and not get it. And you can go in front of the town and not get more money. But we all need to try. And the school committee and the superintendent and the administration is the best ones to try to guide us down that path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing anyone else on Zoom? So if there's someone else in the auditorium?
Hi, my name is Chris Gorman. I'm at 29 Burge Street.
Could you say your name again, sir?
Chris Gorman. Chris Gorman.
Norman.
Gorman, G-O-R.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would like to sort of echo the sentiment of the woman before me. I think that the decisions that are being made in the budgeting process are really difficult. There's certainly a lot of things that could be cut, none of which are good decisions, none of which are easy to make. I guess I wonder what we can do to support you to get more funds? How do we use our voice if we have one?
Thank you very much. On Zoom, Joseph Jordan.
Good evening to everybody. I just want to say thank you to all of the people that spoke before me to express their concerns about our children and what the future looks like moving forward as to what the budget looks like. My name is Joe Jordan. I live on 50 Down Goodrich Street in Lunenburg here. I have one son that graduated from the school. He's doing very well. I have two other children. I have a daughter who is a sophomore. And I also have a son who is in the second grade. So I'm very invested in my kids' education as much as everybody else is here. And this budget shortfall and the actions are remediated by, you know, preventing some of these programs. For example, my son is very big in the music business, on music program. He loves it. He's been in the program for a few years. And he really enjoys it and that's one of the things he looks forward to. I even had a conversation with him today about what's going on. And he said, no, he doesn't want the program to be eliminated. So with that said, I just want the school committee, like everybody said, to go back to the drawing board. And let's figure out exactly what we need to do to keep these programs in. Okay, whatever we need to do, let's keep it in because our kids are our future. And we need to make sure that they have all of the best tools to be able to be successful people in our society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth.
Hi, everyone. Anastasia Greedy, 109 Youngs Road. Am I good to go? Okay. So admittedly, I have not been involved in school committee or finance committee town meetings to date. I think to a lot of parents who are busy, this budget cuts that have been proposed come as a surprise. So we've had a lot of conversations on Facebook. Some of you may be a part of those groups. What I'd love to understand, and I have kind of a list of questions. I don't want to miss my opportunity to ask them, is, so the budget cuts come as a surprise to parents. Many of us that haven't been involved, hopefully they're not a surprise to the district, to our leadership, to the school committee. And so we'd love to understand, or I'd love to understand what the plan is to address some of these rising contract costs, healthcare costs, operational expenses, utility costs. The economy is changing. It's growing. Is there a plan to address by asking the town for more money? Is there a plan to address this by looking for additional grants? Is there a position that's doing that? So just to get an understanding of, you know, hopefully this was not a surprise to the administration and to our leadership. Throughout the session today, would love to know what that plan was and then what that plan is moving forward. Because as costs continue to rise, this means additional budget cuts every year, additional positions being cut. You've heard from a lot of people, the music program, social emotional learning, special needs, assistance for our special needs students, athletics programs, all of these contribute so much to our community, to the sense of belonging that our kids have. And especially after this COVID environment that we're in, that's so important toward building community in our, in our town and in the school communities. Overall, academic success is just as important as emotional and social success. And so I'd also love to understand, you know, some specific questions. Has the healthcare increase of 10% is that something that came as a surprise or was that anticipated and planned for? It's about half of our allotted 2.5% increase that we get from the town. And so was there a plan to address that? Or are these but, or are these cuts to the town positions the plan? Non-personnel costs, technical costs, transportation, utility, those have gone up significantly. Is there a plan to address those as well long-term? You know, can we put solar panels on the schools? And then last but not least, getting a better understanding of how the, and I'm just going to say the acronym E-S-S-E-R. I don't know if there's a different way to say it. Was that funding factored into the budget total? Because it was a temporary grant. Are full-time permanent positions funded using that money? Is the 2.5% increase including that grant? Or was that always kind of kept as a separate line item? So thank you very much. I appreciate everyone.
Thank you. And I see someone else on Zoom?
Hi, thank you. My name is Alma Notaro at 484 Holman Street. I want to speak a little, if I may, for, from a teacher's perspective, I want to echo the gentleman earlier who mentioned that while Lunenburg is in the bottom 10% of spending, the teachers have managed to educate our children to the top 20% of the state, which is not an easy task. I want to underscore that the cuts will gravely impact not only our students in terms of services and class sizes, but also in our ability to attract and to more importantly, retain the best possible educators, as we have been so lucky to have so far. A lot of us bought homes in Lunenburg specifically for the schools and teachers are the backbones of that success. I hope that as these budget codes, cuts are put forth, the needs of teachers in the classroom, specifically in terms of class sizes, which are already big in comparison, are also taken into consideration because we need teachers desperately. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to thank everyone very much for their comments. The plan is that we will address those comments during the superintendent's budget presentation, the alternatives to her initial presentation that we will do this evening. If we don't, there is a second public comment. If we missed your point, you can tell us then and we will do what we can to address your comment. I'm going to ask the school committee if they have any comments. Mr. Layton?
Thank you. I would echo what Chair Arshinbo said about just thanking everyone too, especially the students, parents and staff who reached out to us either through email or calls. It's much appreciated. I think it's important for us to get all the information and try to really make an informed decision. I also do want to let everyone know too, that this isn't finalized tonight, that it is a process, that we're going to be discussing the budget over several meetings. And it should be finalized, it will be finalized in the middle of March. So again, keep asking questions, keep communicating, whether it's through Facebook or email, reaching out to the superintendent and to the school board. And then also there is a finance committee tomorrow where they're going to talk about finance and its relation to the school committee as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Brzezowski?
Hi, sorry. I wanted to say that for the people who emailed but didn't speak tonight, thank you also for speaking up. Dr. Burnham forwarded us your emails and we got quite a few. We got some too. So thank you for sending those over. And I wanted to thank everyone for their comments and for showing up and participating and letting your voices be heard. Because parental involvement in the education system is a huge indicator for success. I think it's part of why Lunenburg has been so successful. Because you show up, because you care. So thank you and we are listening. So thank you and thank you for coming.
Hey, Mr. Beadmore?
First of all. Thank you all for coming tonight and being on the Zoom. I can't tell you how impressed I am by the comments that were made tonight. The questions that were asked. Truth be told, I dreaded coming to this meeting tonight. And. I'm, I'm inspired. By some of the comments that were made. Many, or most of the comments that were made. And I would ask you. Particularly if this is your first time commenting, to not let it be your last. And to get involved. To the greatest extent that you possibly can. I sat in those seats. Five or six years ago. Over budget issues that concerned me relative to athletics and language programs. One night after a finance committee meeting, the chairman of, of the finance committee at the time, Terry, Terry Birchfeld. Came up to me and said, you're so smart. We got a vacancy coming up. Why don't you join? And I did. And it began a journey that I served for three years on the finance committee as clerk, vice chair, and then chair. And now I've been on the school committee for two years and I've served on a slew of other subcommittees and. I was a liaison to the school committee for three years. But what I learned during that process was that. I wasn't as smart as I thought I was. And they weren't as dumb as I thought they were either. This is in, well, you know, the truth hurts. But this is an incredibly difficult job. And we are in an incredibly difficult. Position. And we're just like you. Four of us have kids in the schools. I have a full-time job. I have family crises running continually. And I probably spent. Thirty to forty hours. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. We did know this was coming. When COVID came around. We had a. Strategy, the school department, and I was not on the school committee at the time, but the school department. Had a strategy for continuous improvement. And that strategy addressed a lot of the shortcomings that have existed in Lunenburg for a long time. Shortcomings that are a result of our size. And the funding that has been referred to a little bit earlier. Sorry. Thank you. Many years ago, Lunenburg decided to go it alone. We're a small school. So scheduling in our middle and high school, which I've spent a lot of time on this week, are horrible. And there really isn't a clear path to fixing that. Esser funds were put to use. We knew that Esser funds. Were a lifeline. To deal with serious social and emotional issues. That were showing their face before COVID. But accelerated rapidly during and after COVID. And if you're not aware. Of the mental health crisis that's going on with our kids right now, you're living under a rock. And we spent that money. Knowing that it was going to expire. Because that was the best place to spend it at the time. Knowing that it was going to expire. And planning for that expiration. Slide thirty-six of last week's superintendent's. Presentation showed exactly. What we did. We're cutting four or five positions. We're. Transferring two to the local budget. We're moving four to a restructuring of our Title I grant. We're also living. In a period. Where we're fearing, we're feeling the effects of inflation. That we also all know about if we haven't been living under a rock. Our out of school, our out of district placements have skyrocketed. Our transportation has skyrocketed. We've had budget issues with our utilities. I mean, our, and these are not cost, costs that are discretionary. We have to pay them. And so. And. Chapter seventy increased by 11%. Two years ago. It's been flat since. And it will continue to be. Because I'm gonna continue. It, it will continue to be. As a result. Of the. Of the way our state formulas are set up. We're kind of locked from a revenue perspective. Now. The question was asked, what can we do? I would absolutely encourage everybody to contact your legislators and harass them. I have done so myself. And I have not seen success. I've done so continually over the last five years. In addition to that, we do have a capacity in Lunenburg. To either go to town meeting and ask for more money. But that's a limited amount of money and it's gonna cut from other departments. And I can tell you that. We have vacancies all over the town of Lunenburg largely because we're not paying enough. For our town employees. Things are tough all over in Lunenburg with respect to finances. And I, I would not support that. Quite frankly. The other option is a proposition two and a half override. And I know that's what people were alluding to a little bit earlier. And I, you know. Truth be told, if somebody brought that and put it into town meeting and put it on a ballot, I would vote for it. But the problem is. That there isn't a political appetite, in my opinion, in Lunenburg to do that right now. We went through a tax debacle in this town. That has, I would say, a great number of residents in our town thinking that they got screwed by the town government. I don't know if they did or not. I don't think they did. And I think that the issues are, you know, have been resolved and are being resolved. But to compound it. The reavow is late this year. The suspicions are at an all-time high. And so we have to deal with the political reality of the time. And I just don't think that that is a saleable political issue. Right now. We have the money. That we are gonna spend. There, there are options. There are, there are grants. There are other avenues that we can look at. And we will do so. But they are very unlikely to amount to the 1.3 plus million dollar gap. That we have right now. I'm a parent. I got a kid who's a freshman. And he's doing great and, and, and these cuts are gonna affect him too. So I, I feel it. I'm also an alumnus of this school. And I was an athlete and a musician. So I, I'm right in it. We need your help. We need your continued advocacy. Thank you again. And I'll finally shut up. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you. You have my mic.
Oh, yeah. I'll be quiet.
All right. No mic for you.
Great.
Thank you. We appreciate it. It's tough all along, all around. Obviously, I don't have any kids in the school district. I'm a lifelong educator. Doing this kind of thing is very difficult for me as well. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go through. The rest of our agenda. I have a brief chair's report. We have some very quick business issues. And then we're going to open up the. Budget discussion once again. So the next item, now that I've changed all my notebook pages to write all my notes on your comments, I have to go back. Here we go. The chair's report. The finance committee is holding a public question and answer session. Regarding our budget tomorrow evening during their meeting. I will attend virtually and I will respond where I'm needed. Only two of us can attend, so if any other member of the committee is planning on attending, please let me know. And the emphasis on this presentation will be on the process. Of how. The budget is developed. And which boards and people you should be talking to. So if you would like to hear more about that. The finance committee will be meeting tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the town hall. I have received a communication from the chair of the select board. That as we have anticipated. The two and a half percent increase. For FY twenty-five is a hard number. We are not to expect any more from the town. A reminder, the master planning committee is holding two identical public meetings on February first. Both meetings will be held at the Adult Activity Center, the Eagle House. At four o'clock. And once again at six thirty. Please let your opinions known about planning for Lunenburg's future. So those are my. Chair report comments. We have review and approve minutes of the regular session on December sixth. Did anyone have any questions about those minutes? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve. Well, then don't, don't make a motion if you weren't there.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion. This is Brian Leighton.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote? Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini? Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. Next, we have the review and approve of warrants and line item transfers. The warrant total from January tenth to January twenty-second. Was two hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents. If you do have questions, I know that the warrant items come up quick. If you do have questions, please let us know. They have been signed. And now we have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that our kindergarten registration is currently open. We will be holding our kindergarten readiness meeting for parents on January thirtieth at six thirty PM via Zoom. Information regarding this event. Is available on the website. Pre-kindergarten registration will open on March first. Our registration for our extended day programming. Is opening. The extended day summer program registration will open Monday, April twenty-second. The summer program will run. On the weeks of July eighth. July fifteenth. July twenty-second. And July twenty-ninth. Our before and after school extended day program registration. For next school year will open on Wednesday, May first. And registration for our early learning center will open on Monday, May twentieth. We separated them out intentionally this year so that there was not any confusion about filling out the wrong form and thinking that you had registered. So we broke them all out with separate. Registration dates. Few reminders, we've got our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting. On February seventh, that will be a hybrid meeting from town hall starting at six thirty. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be February twenty-eighth. And that will be a hybrid meeting from here at the middle high school, also starting at six thirty. And a reminder that February nineteenth. Schools and offices are closed for President's Day. And that entire week. Schools are closed for the February vacation. And that's all I have for this evening.
And our student representative report is next. I don't know if we have a student representative on Zoom. If you are there. On mute and sing out. And if you're not there, well, then we'll catch you next time.
Mandy, you can say. Hello, I'm Elise Boinevich. I'm the class president of twenty twenty-five, the junior class.
Thanks. Do you have a report this evening?
I don't have a report, but I know that there's not a lot of students that keep close tabs on the entire. School committee, so I would like to.
Okay, thank you. Then under new business, we have FY twenty-five school choice.
This year, I'd like for you to consider. Keeping Lunenburg Public Schools participating in the school choice program. And I'm gonna make the same recommendation for your consideration that I did a year ago. That we open five seats. For school choice. In grade nine next year. We feel that that number. Can be accommodated, given that we see students in the eighth grade. Moving on to money tech and other options for high school. We believe that. It's a small number. It won't impact. Class sizes in any significant way. We do not have to vote on this this evening. Just putting it out there for your consideration. We can put this on the agenda for. February seventh. For a vote at that time.
I don't see a reason to delay the vote on this. Does anyone on the committee see a reason to wait?
I think that's a question, Beth, right?
Sure.
Not for five students.
So I. Two questions. The first is, did we fill those open seats last year that we opened? I think it was the same number.
I believe of the five. That were opened for this year's ninth grade. Four of them are filled. One is still open. I think that we can consider leaving that seat with that class. Open, so that if a tenth grader. Was seeking a school choice option next year, there is that one seat still open. We haven't had a lottery in some time. Most of the inquiries we get at my office. Regarding school choice. Are for the lower grades.
Right.
Particularly the primary school level. But our class size is there. We, we don't wanna see increase significantly, so.
But.
The trick with school choice. From a.
From a budgeting standpoint is, is that it's a. It's a trailing funding source. Those numbers are trued up. Not in the current year, but in the year following. And my, my thinking on this, if I, if I recall correctly, looking at these numbers. My fear is, as a result of these budget cuts, we are gonna see students exiting, which is going to cost us dollars. You know, net dollars. And if we, you know, maybe we should, maybe we should think about increasing the number. But. It's just a thought. I, I don't know that we would resolve it. It's just conjecture on my part, but. I don't know.
Is there, is there a number that you have in mind so that we can do some analysis around our ability to accept additional students? Again. There's no guarantee that we would fill those. Those seats.
Oh, Laura, sorry. Mrs. Brzezowski?
Hi, so what's? Can? What's the re, this only hit the drive, so I didn't get a chance to ask questions or. Look it up. What's the reimbursement rate for the, from the state for school choice students?
I believe it's five thousand.
It's five thousand, so it's like a less than a third of what we. Spend. And we're not allowed to give. We're not allowed to give like preferential enrollment to students of teachers in the district or anything like that, right? It has to be lottery only. Okay.
It looks to me like we have enough thoughts on this that we should put this off. I don't wanna spend a lot of time when people wanna hear about something else. And, and we can easily flip this into the next meeting.
Ms. Arshinbo, I'd like to make a motion to table the school choice discussion for our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, then a roll call vote. Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini? Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the FY twenty-five school calendar. I would suggest. I would suggest that this is on our agenda only as discussion. I don't want to vote on this tonight, but I want people to have an idea of what it is. So, Dr. Burnham, if you'd like to present that.
So, this is a draft version of a proposed school calendar for next school year. There was input from a calendar committee. There was input from the school advisory councils. There was input from the school building leadership teams. Now, we're, we have a draft. And what we've been doing the last few years is we bring it in as a draft for discussion at one meeting and typically delay a vote on the calendar until the next meeting to allow additional time for staff and/or parents or students to offer additional input on the draft calendar. Anybody who does have any thoughts about the calendar can send them via email to lps@lunenburgschools.net. We, we take a look at the emails and we would bring any comments forward for the school committee consideration. Typically, when we bring the draft calendar forward, we also include dates for our parent-teacher conferences. As I had indicated at a previous meeting with the school committee, where we-
We're just looking for batteries. These microphones eat batteries like you wouldn't believe.
Unfortunately. I have, I have batteries. We'll take a battery break in a minute. I, I have some. There are no dates on the draft calendar for the parent-teacher conferences for next year because each school is engaging in conversation about piloting a different model that they feel might be more beneficial for the grade levels for that building. So they're going to be looking to pilot something different. What I would suggest for the benefit of parents who make plans around vacation weeks and professional development days, so on, that potentially at the February seventh meeting, you could vote to accept the calendar with the dates that we have proposed at this point for vacations and such. And then after each building leadership team and school advisory council has an opportunity to design a pilot for their parent-teacher conferences for next year, we'll come back with proposed dates and we'll amend the calendar. I don't anticipate that happening, though, until later in the spring.
Okay, sounds good.
So, no action required on this this evening. We'll, we'll wait and see if we get additional feedback.
Anyone that would like to see that calendar, if you go to the school website, lunenburgschools.net, you go to school committee, go to minutes and agendas, and then when you hit that, scroll down, and you will see meeting information, meeting by meeting. And you will have the calendar there. And most likely, they will put it in a more convenient spot than that for you. But for the time being, that's how that works. Next, we have under donations. We have one quick item.
This evening, we have a check in the amount of eighty-two dollars and seventy cents from Box Tops for Education. This is for the primary school and if accepted, these monies would be deposited into their student activities account and be used for upcoming school trips.
All right, then I need a motion to accept the donation for the primary school from Box Tops.
Second.
And then we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Brzezowski?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini?
Yeah.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes. So now we are under old business discussion, the FY twenty-five proposed budget.
Why, thank you. So I would just like to say thank you to all those who sent emails regarding the proposal that was presented for the school committee last week. This is a difficult process. It's an ongoing process. We have to start somewhere. So we start with some proposals. That said, we listen to feedback. The school committee gives some consideration. We discuss different proposals as we move through the, the process. So this evening, I have some additional information and some additional cuts that could be alternate cuts, should the school committee wish not to make some cuts that were presented as an option last meeting. So I, I would just like to go back and clarify for everyone that for a number of months, the school committee has stated that their top priority is student achievement. That is at the basis of the development of this budget. There was some confusion around this slide. So I'd like to take a minute to provide some clarification. And this comes back to some of the question around, was it a surprise? Was it planned for? It's a little bit of both. So we can give you some of that information here. When we talk about the contractual increases, we're not talking about teacher contract increases, custodial contract increases. That's all part of the personnel budget. These contract increases are services. So included in this ballpark number are the increases to our out-of-district placement. And we'll talk about that some more in a minute. Our bus transportation contract, which we know what that is. That, that's a number that we can anticipate and plan for. Our special ed van transportation, we saw some increases there. That is not as solid and reliable a figure because the need for special ed transportation can change during the course of a school year. There are some technology line increases. That is to address some needed upgrades for our school network. These upgrades will help keep the, the network secure. In the health insurance round figure of five hundred thousand, that includes the total staff currently enrolled in our health insurance with a ten percent increase. We received information from the town manager Monday, late day, that she had gotten some updated information. And we are now aware that the maximum increase to the health insurance should not exceed six point six percent, which is great news. It's possible that it may come in lower than six point six percent, but we won't know that number until sometime mid-February. It's exciting to think that we're dropping three and a half percent. But based on the number of folks enrolled, that really translates to just about a hundred thousand dollars, which we're not going to be able to put back lots of positions back into the budget with that. We did not know that we should be anticipating a ten percent increase in health insurance a year ago or two years ago. We did not anticipate a significant jump in out-of-district tuition costs two years ago or even at this point, a year ago. So some of these things are surprises that you can't plan for. And just generally speaking, that is the nature of education. We did know about, and we did plan for the loss of the COVID grant monies. In this fiscal year, we are paying for one administrator, which is one of our instructional teacher coaches, three teacher positions, four counselor positions, and four tutors. These teachers and tutors and counselors were staff added through the COVID, post-COVID period to address the mental health concerns that we were seeing post-COVID that, as Mr. Beardmore had indicated, existed before COVID, but were exacerbated through COVID and beyond. And we knew with the online learning, remote learning from home, that did not work for all students. And there was learning gaps that were created during that hybrid year. So those teachers are intervention teachers and those tutors are intervention tutors. In other words, they're working with either students in small group and perhaps one-on-one with a targeted intervention to address a specific learning gap to close that gap for the students so that they can get back up on grade level where they belong. We knew that we were going to lose this money, and we knew we were going to lose these positions. What I proposed a week ago is that we keep our tutors to continue offering intervention supports for students, but have them funded out of our Title I grant instead of out of the expiring ESER grant. Oh, I want to go back just for a second because there's some detail I think that's pretty important. Another piece of information that we got late Monday from the town manager is that the electricity costs should be stable or potentially even reduced late fall of twenty-four. We were planning for an increase. But the line item increase that you see in this year's budget is actually to get us set straight for the actual costs due to an error in projection on the utility costs by the previous facility director. The recommended budget for electricity was, was insufficient. We, we learned that that was the situation after the budget was passed last year by the school committee and at town meeting. So we knew July first, we were underfunded in that line. And we've been very cautious all year long with the budget, knowing that we will have to transfer funds from other lines to cover that shortfall in the budget. So the increase that you see is really just to set us straight for what our actual costs are and have been with a little bit of added increase anticipating that we might see an increase to electricity costs. Again, I can go back now and make some adjustment to that line, knowing that we feel pretty confident that we won't be seeing increases in our kilowatt per hour charges. But again, it, it's not going to be a significant savings on that line, but, but I can reduce that by a little bit, which we have not yet done. We are, and I will discuss this in a minute, we've been working on a plan that we hope will reduce the need for eleven yellow school buses down to ten. The savings on a single bus in round numbers is about eighty thousand for the year. We'll talk more about that in a second. The next handful of notes that you see here on this slide have to do with special education. So I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Special Services, Mrs. Juliana Hanscom.
So for those numbers that are on there, the fourteen percent increase for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and the FY twenty-five out-of-district tuition cost of forty-seven thousand dollars, those are costs that increased due to the state increasing the private tuitions. So for the schools, they have a set tuition that they have to, that we have to pay every year. And then the Operational Service Division has the ability to be able to increase or give them a raise in their tuitions every year based on their costs. What happened after COVID, we had a couple of years where it was a zero percent increase. And then in twenty twenty-four, we were hit with that the tuition rates were going to go up fourteen percent. That wasn't additional students from Lunenburg going out to these schools. It was the students that we currently had had. And then those increases hit at fourteen percent last year, which drove us up a hundred and thirty-eight. And then this year, they're not going up fourteen percent, but the four point six nine percent that they're forecasting that they're going to go up is still going to cost us forty-seven additional thousand dollars. That's not for any more students going out. We did have one student that we added to add to our out-of-district alum list. And that was for a student who newly came into the district.
Again, you can't budget for a student's out-of-district placement if the student isn't enrolled in the school district at that time. Yet we are obligated, if a child is already in an out-of-district placement, to keep them in that placement.
But I do think it's important for other people to understand what you mean by out-of-district placement and what costs the school bears versus what's, what costs the state bears and how those costs can- and how those costs can be incurred without us knowing. Like, my understanding is if somebody moved into town and they had a child that required out-of-district placement in the town they were in, and then they moved here, we would have to incur that cost without ever knowing they were coming.
Exactly, yes. They do have the move-in law, so that that's a special date for those type of situations is April 1st. So basically, what the state tells us is that if a student moves in prior to April 1st into Lunenburg, we have to assume those costs for the next year and moving forward because we would be able to budget it. If a student moves into Lunenburg that's in an out-of-district placement after April 1st, their sending town where they had previously lived owns that out-of-district tuition for the rest of this year, from April to June, and then for the following year because they would have been able to budget it. So that's the move-in law.
Question? Can I ask a question?
I don't, I don't think, no.
I just...
There's, and I have, I have no problems coming back and having a workshop, if you'd like, to talk about the out-of-districts. And there's a lot of things that go on with the circuit breaker reimbursements and the tuitions and the state monies that come in and what that stands for. We have, I will say that I'm part of a state organization board, the Administrators for Special Education, I sit on the executive board. And we advocate every year at the state level and also the federal level for those funds to be fully funded. The circuit breaker has been fully funded the last few years at 75%. So that is something that I'm proud of, that we've been able to advocate for and get that. But there still are additional expenses that come from it. And the OSD rate, that's a rate, it's almost like when you get your electric bill and you see that your kilowatt-hours, the cost per kilowatt has gone up and there's absolutely nothing you can do about it. That's pretty much the same thing with OSD, with them giving private schools a raise, so to speak. We still have to pay for that. I can say that we do do our due diligence, though, on the special ed transportation, although, again, bus companies can raise rates and we do have contracts, but they still go up every year. And they did go up considerably during, after COVID, when the students came back. I did task the BCBA's this, the beginning of this school year, when we were looking at this crisis. They went to the principals, they went to the staff, they looked at our monitors. So those are additional people that would have ride on a bus if a student might need additional support. We, I had the BCBA's look at those cases very, very closely to see if there was any way to pull those monitors off of the bus. Because every monitor on a bus is roughly about $20,000 to $25,000 on top of the van route. And the BCBA's, in conjunction with the principals and the staff, were able to get almost all but one of the monitors off of all of our vans and have those routes running safely. And the savings this year was almost $39,000 for our special ed transportation. And next year, if we continue in the same, and again, like Dr. Burnham said, sometimes we have cases that come in where we can't help, but we need to have that additional support. But if everything stays the same, what they put into place for this year will mean a savings of almost $65,000 in special ed transportation for next year. So we are doing our due diligence. It's really hard to be able to say everything that we're trying to do behind the scenes to be physically responsible, but we really are working to try to make it as best we can.
So I mentioned that we'd been working on a plan to potentially reduce from 11 yellow school buses to 10. What we would be looking to do is move our extended-day program, our before-and-after-school program, out of the TCP pasios and back into a school setting. And I just want to explain how the bodies move with this new model so that you understand how I'm opening up seats on a bus. One of the challenges and why we moved to TCP five years ago was that we were having a hard time securing enough staffing for two different locations. Because previously, it had been located at the Turkey Hill and at the primary school. Co-locating everything in one place allowed better use of the staff that we had to provide a safe level of staffing for the program. So we would want to maintain one location. And we can do that with two locations, one dedicated for the morning and one dedicated for the afternoon. So buses go out, they go through town, they pick up students, they bring them to Turkey Hill. The kiddos on the bus at that point are kindergarten through fifth grade. Once they arrive at Turkey Hill in the morning, the Turkey Hill students get off the bus, and now there are seats open on the bus. And its next stop is the primary school. So our thinking is Turkey Hill would be the location for the morning. Parents would drop students off. And when it's time for school to start at Turkey Hill, buses roll up. They let students get off the bus and go into the school. Any Turkey Hill students who are in the extended-day program at that point would walk down the hall and go to their classroom. The primary school-age students would go out and get on the bus in those empty seats. And then the bus takes all of those students to the primary school and drops them off there for the day. It's the reverse in the afternoon. The location for the afternoon would be the primary school. That's where parents would pick up all the students at the end of the day. Buses roll up at the end of the day, and Turkey Hill students get on the bus. Turkey Hill students who are going to extended day would also get on the bus. Keep in mind, at this time, there are no primary school students on the bus yet. When the buses get down to the primary school, any of the Turkey Hill students who are going to extended day get off the bus. And then, any of the primary school students who take the bus home would then get on the bus. The bus leaves the school and delivers everybody home. Later on, parents come to the primary school and pick their kiddos up. Right now, if we are at our cap of 75 students in extended day, that's almost a full bus. Most of our buses seat 77. So if we don't have to move the students who are enrolled in extended day, our hope is, and we've asked D-Bus to work on, getting our students on 10 bus routes. That would save us the cost of a bus. I can't promise that it'll happen, but it's something that we're working on to save the cost of a bus. Again, I want to call to everybody's attention that this is a process. And this was the same slide that was included in last week's presentation, contemplated personnel reductions. Contemplated. This was the proposal last week. There were some positions that were included in the list because the administration discussed the potential for that cut. And it's left as possible because the administration is not ready to recommend that that's a cut that we can successfully navigate in terms of what we're thinking and planning for at this moment in time. So there were possible positions included on this list. If it's not noted as possible, we were saying that those positions were included in the number that I gave everyone last week, which still didn't get us to a 2.5 target budget. If the school committee wishes to reconsider some of the positions that are, were on the list a week ago, in order to restore the athletic director and trainer positions, we need to make different cuts. But they have to offset the dollar amount that those original proposed cuts were. So instead of eliminating the athletic director and trainer, we would eliminate an assistant principal at the middle high school and add two stipend dean positions. That means current staff in the schools that take on some added administrator-type function for additional pay. But in addition, we would also have to eliminate an additional maintenance position. Last week, we included one cut in maintenance. But if we want to restore the director and the trainer positions, we need to put the second maintenance position on the table for a cut. That takes my maintenance team, who handle the buildings and the grounds, the entire campus, including TCP, from a staff of four to a staff of two. So when we think about the reduction of an assistant principal at the middle school, middle high school, what does that look like? Currently, we have one principal and three assistant principals, two on the high school side of the house, one on the middle school side of the house. If we made this cut, you would still have one principal, you would have an assistant principal for the middle school, an assistant principal for the high school, and we would add that stipended dean position. But keep in mind, those folks are not administrators. They have limits to what they can do. So we would be going from four administrators for this building to three. We have another alternate proposal that is new. We have had some some folks express concern over the elimination of a board-certified behavior analyst position. We currently have two in the district. The way that they work, one covers the Turkey Hill and the primary school, the other covers the middle high school, the ACE program, and any out-of-district placements. Going down to one means that one person would cover four schools, the ACE program. For anyone who doesn't know the ACE program, it's our special education program for students aged 18 to 22 working on job skills, life skills, post-high school. And the out-of-district placements, one person handling all of it. So with more consideration and consultation with our Director of Special Services and the principal at the Turkey Hill Elementary, based on the current number of students in our TLC sub-separate program and our Achieve sub-separate program at Turkey Hill, because the number of students is low, we feel that we can collapse those two into one and eliminate a special ed teacher. Collapsing those two classes into one and that teacher cut restores the BCBA position. There's another proposal for the school committee's consideration. Our finance director, who also was our HR director, took a position in another district and left the district just before Thanksgiving. We went through an interview process, and even before he exited the district, we had hired his replacement. Based on contractual obligations where she was currently employed, she had to provide a 90-day notice in order to break her contract with the district that she was in, which would have had her arriving here February 12th. I received an email late Friday that after much reconsideration, based on her professional and personal priorities, she was no longer going to be accepting the position. So I don't have a finance director or HR director coming. That said, we need that level of support. I shared with the school committee previously to get us through this period of time without a finance director, that I was looking to contract consultants to come in and help take over some of the business office function, particularly the finance and the budget. We could possibly not repost and fill that position and instead fill the finance function next year with a consultant group. We estimate savings there could be, yeah, $60,000. I think it's important for some context. When I arrived in the district in FY '19, your district leadership included a superintendent position, a director of special services, a director of finance and HR, a director of facilities and grounds, an IT director, and a food service director. In this current year, at least in the budget, I know that the finance position hasn't been filled for a couple of months. We have a superintendent, a director of special services. Three years ago, we added the director of teaching and learning position. We had a director of finance and HR, still a placeholder in the current budget that we're building for next year. We have filled the director of facilities and grounds position, and we have a food service director, no IT director. We are currently using contracted consultants to support and advise us relative to IT management and leadership, decision-making, recommendations, budgeting, those kinds of things. If we opt not to fill this position and go with contracted service instead, next year, you will have a superintendent, a director of special services, someone who takes care of all special ed and other services like English language learner. and other services like English language learner, Bible fours. She also handles, serves as the out of district coordinator for the district. That's a separate position in many districts. We don't have that position. We would have a director of teaching and learning, a director of facilities and grounds, and a food service director, which if you do a head count is less district-level leadership positions than I had when I, when I arrived in the district in FY19. It doesn't matter how many bodies are here. We have to comply with all the state reporting, state requirements for any number of things. If we have two people at central office or six people at central office, it matters not to the Department of Ed. Deadlines are deadline, and they are hard and firm. I have been concerned about the workload for some of these key positions for some time, and I have expressed that concern on several occasions to the school committee. However, this is an option. The position is not going to be filled. We could leave it unfilled and not budget a salary for that line and move monies to contracted service to fill this function. So if we go back to this sort of at a glance as of today, the additional things that I've put on the table and things that potentially come off the table. So the strike through on the librarian, we, after further assessment, feel that that position really cannot be reduced. That position, our librarian, is also a certified teacher who can teach some elective classes for both the middle school and the high school. We also talked about the technology class on the middle school side of the house. And to eliminate that position, we would need to backfill it with something. We've explored options there, and we don't feel that we can reduce that class. So we're taking that position off the table. We don't think it's viable. The other strike throughs are the athletic director, the athletic trainer, and the BCBA. And the the things that are added in red are the potential cuts that offset taking those other positions off the table and then some to get us to our target. Mr. Beadmore had a comment last meeting. He was concerned about the 13% of the proposed cuts last week, 13% in the teacher group. I just want to be clear for everybody. When, and I, and I did say this last week, but I want to reiterate it. This is all staff that fall under the LEA, the teacher's contract. That includes your classroom teachers, your unified arts teachers, your special education teachers, intervention teachers, the BCBA, guidance counselors, social workers, nurses, school psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and occupational therapists. They all fall in that one grouping. So 13%, when you break that down, it's as of last week's proposal. It was seven classroom teachers, 2.6 FTEs of unified arts, one special ed teacher, one or three intervention teachers, one BCBA, four guidance counselors, and one social worker. So when you see the 13%, it's not all classroom teacher positions. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there are varied roles that are proposed for elimination that fall into that grouping. Another thing that people have expressed concern about is teacher cuts and class sizes going up. Here are your class sizes for kindergarten through eighth grade this year in the green block. And you can see how many classrooms are required per grade to get those class sizes. And then in the pink block with the teacher cuts that we're talking about, classroom teacher cuts, you can see that we're, we're not seeing a significant shift in our class sizes. The class sizes will not exceed 25 unless we get a whole bunch of move-ins in one grade, which we typically try to anticipate. We see that sometimes with sixth grade, but we, we anticipate that. We don't see large numbers enrolling through the summer or during the school year, consistently reliably double-digit enrollment at any other grade level. So we can make those teacher cuts and not blow up the class sizes. Can't we just get grants? I don't have a grant person, but we pursue every single grant that we become aware of that helps us with our mission and the strategic plan that we outlined and the priorities that the school committee has stated. This list of grants is not the entitlement grants. Every district gets them every year. You just have to wait and see how much money you're getting. These are grants that we actively pursued in a competitive environment and were awarded. We have pursued others that we were not awarded. The nature of grants is they have priorities and criteria, and you can apply, but if you don't meet all of their priorities and criteria, you are not going to be awarded the grant. We have pursued federal safety grants. We have pursued behavioral health grants. We pursue everything that we become aware of that helps us with our work to move the district forward. We are working really hard to secure grant funding. So with the swap-out or with those positions left in and a little bit extra savings if we don't hire a finance director, assuming the worst-case scenario now at a 6.6% increase and a hard 2.5% increase from the town manager for our budget for next year, right now, I'm down to under $25,000 as the gap. I can continue to fine-tune these numbers. People have asked, could we please cut other things and not people? I wish we had the luxury of such expense lines that I could close a gap in excess of $1 million just by cutting back on our expense lines. We have run lean in our expense lines every year that I have been here. I have level funded or decreased every single line except those lines that we know contractually we are obligated to increase, like our yellow school bus transportation. I don't think we want to cut to the point that our teachers don't have paper or if a chair, a student chair breaks that we can't replace the chair, or if the swing in the playground breaks, we can't replace the swing. We are already on a bare bones expense budget. The only place that we are going to make up this gap is with staffing. We added ESER positions over the last three years that we knew we were going to have to cut because the money was going to be gone. With the increase to health insurance and some of those other contractual costs, we have to come up with pretty much an equal number of cuts. I said this last week, and I'm going to say it again. We developed a strategic plan for continuous improvement for the district aligned with school committee's stated priorities. When we had funds available, we used them to hire the staff to address that strategic plan. Now we just don't have the funds next year. And yeah, health insurance is going to go up again for FY26. And if we're talking about a double-digit increase, we're back here having more conversation about staff cuts. Somebody asked me, a parent emailed me and asked, well, could we just have all of the employees take a pay cut and then we don't have to lose any positions? If we were facing a one-time catastrophic anomaly, a little like the COVID year, that may make sense to have that conversation. That's not what we're facing. We're facing limited resources. There are going to be limited resources for FY25, 26, 27. What I said when I came here and presented my first budget, we will do the very best we can with whatever we have. We are prioritizing what happens in the classroom. Somebody said to me in an email, having a curriculum lead person and administrator is a luxury we can't afford. I would dare say it's a luxury that we, we must afford. It's not a luxury at all, quite frankly. The last time this district had curriculum leadership district-wide was 2012. And this position was not reinstated until 2021. When there's no one responsible to ensure that curriculum is being executed as it should be, the nature of things is that teachers are left to work with their own resources. We did not have until last year in this district a district curriculum for math, for literacy, K-5, for math, for ELA 6-8. We did not have a curriculum that was state curriculum standards aligned and on grade level rigor. If you're not teaching students curriculum that is standards-aligned and on grade level rigor, when they're assessed by the state on those standards at that grade level, are we really expecting that they're going to perform and achieve really well when we haven't been teaching them what the expected curriculum is? We put the curriculum in place for K-5, math, and literacy. We have a coach that's working with teachers around how to administer benchmark assessments, look at that data, interpret the data, figure out what types of intervention individual students need in order to close the gaps that they have. Curriculum leadership, a curriculum, and support for teachers to elevate what we call tier-one instruction. That's the classroom. That's for everybody in the grade. We, we, we can't say that we're prioritizing achievement if we don't have those things in place. We put them in place, and we saw, we saw the benefit of that for the Turkey Hill, for their MCAS performance and their accountability ranking. So I don't think that they're luxuries if in fact our priority is around student achievement. And I understand fully how important the extracurriculars are. I will share a personal story. My son discovered lacrosse when he was in the eighth grade because he had a teacher in the eighth grade who was a high school lacrosse coach and got the kids all turned on to lacrosse. When he went to high school, he played lacrosse for four years. He went to college primarily motivated by the fact that he wanted to keep playing lacrosse. And he kept his grades up and graduated in four years because he had to in order to play lacrosse. I fully appreciate for some kids, that's the lifeline. That's their motivation. And I also understand for other kids, it's art or it's music. We understand the social, emotional benefits of all of these things as well as the academic benefits. We have difficult decisions and choices to make. We simply can't afford to do everything that we want to be able to do with the resources that are available. So where does this process go beyond here? As the chair had already indicated, the first meeting in February and the first meeting in March for the last several years, we have included in the agenda a question-and-answer period, which is different from a public comment period because people can ask questions and actually get answers. It's, it's an opportunity for two-way communication. So we're planning to continue with that model. We're still trying to fine-tune, I think, when exactly we will hold our school committee meeting with a budget hearing and a vote to approve the FY25 budget and when we will be before the finance committee to present that budget. But we do know the town meeting will be the first Saturday in May, and that's when the school department budget as part of the bigger town budget will be voted and approved. So if the school committee has any questions.
Dr. Burnham for considering our questions over the course of the last week and responding with some alternatives. I, I think in part from requests from members and, and also from the public. And I, I think that these are good ideas that you brought forward, and I think that they need to be discussed and analyzed. And I think that they need to be discussed and analyzed over the course of the next few meetings. I, I would, so I have a specific question about the, the idea around the maintenance position. And then a more general question about the contractual services for finance and, and HR. We have four maintenance personnel and then for the benefit of most of the people in the room, I would assume maintenance and custodians are two different roles in Lunenburg. So we're not, the custodians are affected, but specific to the, the alternative plan that you suggested today is expanding the reduction from one to two maintenance personnel. Our maintenance personnel, particularly in the winter, are the ones that are responsible for plowing the parking lots and taking care of sidewalks and those sorts of things. Also in the summer, they handle all of our grounds that are not the, the fields directly in front of the building that we currently have contracted services for. Are, is your intent to expand contracted services at least to deal with the plowing? You know, what about mowing the grass in the summer, those, those kinds of things?
Yeah, Mr. Hevy, our director of facilities and grounds is here this evening. He may want to offer some thoughts as well. But I will say that I think we're keeping that option open. I will tell you that we have challenges beyond the staffing if we cut positions. Within the last week, one of the trucks that we're looking to replace because it is so rusted, we couldn't use to plow because we couldn't put it into four wheel drive because the drive shaft rusted through and fell off. So I may not have the equipment. Even if I do have the, the bodies, I, I may not have the vehicles to clear snow without some assistance. I know that last year we had a snowstorm mid March. We lost power in a good part of the town. We actually delayed our budget hearing because we were concerned that people couldn't participate remotely because they may not have power. It snowed so heavily at times and we were down a plow at that point. We couldn't keep up with the snowfall at the primary Turkey Hill and TCP and the middle high school. We really lost the primary school and the snow was higher than the plow blade. We had to ask the DPW for assistance with bigger equipment, which they did assist us with when they were satisfied with road conditions. In conversation late this fall with the DPW director, he advised us that we should probably seek our own outside large equipment because they're down equipment too. And he wasn't sure that he would be able to be of assistance. So I think realistically, looking at all of the challenges, I do think that we need to explore contracting some help for snow removal and potentially a little bit more help from our contracted landscapers that, that handled the playing fields.
So my, I, I guess what I'm getting to is I think we need to have that fully burdened and figured out, you know, as part of that, what I think would be an additional gap in, in that scenario. Just for the benefit of the folks who are looking for things to influence, the capital planning committee considered that truck this past year. The town manager made her recommendation to the finance committee and select board, I believe, last week. And that truck fell below the line, it's two spots down. So it's just outside of the funding bubble. It might make it, it might not. So if you, if you want to advocate for that, I would send you the finance committee meeting tomorrow night. The, the other question that I had, and this is more of a request. When Mr. Cassidy was here, it was really nice to be able to pick up the phone and call Mr. Cassidy anytime and be able to understand the ins and outs of what was going on. And I know that it wasn't just to members of the school committee. It was members of the broader school community. And that level of staffing, I don't consider a luxury. I think that that's a necessity. And, and as a result of that, I'm, I'm very hesitant about not backfilling that position. I, I think perhaps I could be comforted by an explanation of what these contracted services look like, who the people are, what their qualifications are, where else they're doing it, those kinds of things. And it doesn't necessarily need to be in a broad public meeting, but I, I personally just feel like we're, we, we may be, we may be asking for trouble with that, that, that may exceed the savings. You know, perhaps penny wise and pound foolish there.
Again, I just wanted to offer that as an option for your consideration. Hear me, Mrs. Brzezinski?
Hi. Sorry. So first of all, Dr. Burnham, thank you for the alternatives. I think after last week's meeting, we were all kind of feeling kind of stuck and a little stunned with the cuts. So presenting alternatives and working towards other options. I know as a committee member, I feel much better. And honestly, as a parent, I feel better knowing that we're working on figuring out the solution here. And we're getting to a place where, I mean, no one's going to be happy. But it, it seems like it'll be a little more viable. I would like to again say, just, um, sorry. Wait a second, sorry. As far as the BCBA's go, I'm really, I would really like to save the BCBA's. But the, we have two currently. And I'm, I'm really happy that you came up with a plan to continue that level of staffing. I think the BCBA's are something that not a lot of parents, you know, we're not getting tons of emails about them like we are the athletic director and the athletic trainer. But I think they make a huge difference in the lives of the students they do work with and the families they do work with. And I think they save the district a ton of money in the end. So I would definitely advocate for us keeping both positions. What else? I'm sorry. I'm really not happy that we don't have a director of finance right now. And I'm really not happy she's starting, she's not starting. It cost us months of potential searching. We could have been looking because we, she was supposed to come on and we were waiting. So I'm, I'm not happy about that. I don't like the idea of outsourcing it. I don't like the idea of not having a director of finance. I know it saves a lot of money, but I think it's going to make a lot of trouble for us in the long term. This has been a really difficult budget season. I don't have someone I can ask questions to. I don't have someone I can get information from. Currently, all that's available on my drive for the budget is titled final recommend, final recommended budget, March fifteenth, twenty twenty three. That's what I have for budget information for this year's budget to compare against things and to look at. And that is, it, it's not spread out. I can't ask questions about things and the questions I have had, you've been too busy to answer, which I get because it's been insanely busy right now. You're trying to run a school and deal with this issue. But currently I don't think this is working and I don't think not having a director of finance is a great idea. I would really have to know more about how it would work with the contracting. I don't know if they're, what it would be like, but I know that not being able to ask someone like Mike Cassidy questions about the budgeting has been, it's made this very difficult to know how much we're spending on things and get more details or follow up questions. Also, I'm a little nervous about the maintenance position because the, we, it seems like the town has been putting more and more on us to do as far as the heavy equipment. And we're having to do more with older and older equipment that is not getting replaced. And wanted to reiterate what Peter said about, you know, parents, if you need something to advocate for the heavy equipment, the snow removal equipment is a good one. Because that really affects us. It affects whether or not school's going to start late or we're going to have a snow day. Those are hours that kids can be in, we, we need the equipment. And I wish we could work on a little more cooperation between the town and the school. Because it feels like a lot just keeps getting dropped on our plate without the finances, the financial resources for us to make up for the loss. And that's all I got right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton.
Thank you. I would agree with much of what Laura and Peter had stated. I want to thank the superintendent. This is definitely a hard thing to do within a week to, to make this new adjustment and alternatives and also improvements. I think the process itself is, it is challenging, but we do have again till the middle of March to finalize this. Some of, I wanted to reiterate too, what the Chair Arshinbo had stated, that the select board had reached out and said the ceiling for the budget is a, a hard 2.5%. So just want to make sure the public is aware of that. Also, the, in regards to the maintenance, if it's contractually possible, is it possible to have work studies where students are having that part time job after school, helping out with maintenance? I wondered if that was possible. Also, sports fees or user fees too? Could we re look at user fees and sports fees as well? I think we should also set up a, a meeting with the town manager to discuss health insurance and alternatives, maybe even high deductible plans, things like that, other options, ways that we can provide more options for town, town members, employees for, for options of lowering costs. In regards to the finance and HR director, I agree with Laura and Peter. I would like to see the data of other schools using contract services and if it's working. But I'd want to have some sort of assurances before I would go to a contracted service. I, I would think too, we, we would have a better option of getting an HR director or finance director if we had a July first date potentially as a starting point. But I just think that most schools probably have a finance and HR director. I'm concerned about contracting it out. And I think also, as we had said about the truck, I think reaching out to the town manager, trying to adjust the capital plan like they had done in the past to try to move that truck closer would be beneficial too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schoenbrini.
First of all, I want to say that I think that Dr. Burnham, you and your team have done an excellent job at choosing between the lesser two evils. No one wants to cut a job, no one wants to cut a position. But at the end of the day, we only have so much money and you have to make choices. The first thing I want to say is I want to thank the kids that came and spoke. I think that people that are making cuts to the school need to listen to what the kids say. And it's not just that the schools are for the children, but that their feedback indicates what's working as a whole. We as adults can look at the numbers and we can see, you know, this amount being spent here, that amount being spent there. But for kids to come forward, to be so articulate and so passionate, to spend their time at nine o'clock at night to advocate for something, it not only shows us what we should emphasize, but really does show us what's working. The second thing I wanted to comment about in terms of the budget is that I think that Lunenburg is blessed with a core of teachers that are truly extraordinary. We have a Toyota Corolla budget and we get Cadillac Escalade quality education and the numbers prove that. And I think that if we are in the process of considering what cuts to make, we have to understand that we are essentially asking these teachers to be MacGyver, educationally speaking, every single day. We give them a pair of scissors and maybe a piece of chewing gum and they have to figure out how to get out of a bank vault. And so we really need to think about other sources of revenue. And that leads me to my third point. This is me speaking as a citizen of the town in Lunenburg and not as a school committee member. But I think it is absolutely clear to me that this town needs to change the way they fund public schools. At least temporarily, we need to organize and pass and override. If you do not have a child in the school, be selfish. Your number one most valuable asset for the vast majority of the people of Lunenburg, just like the vast majority of the people in this country, is your house. Time and again, studies have proven that contribution to education in public schools in a local community is the very best way to improve the value of your home. A study done by the federal government showed that every dollar that is spent on local public education increases the value of your house $20. If you had a contractor that could make an addition to your house that would guarantee increase its value that much, every single person who had the expendable cash would make that choice every time. So if you do not have a child in this school, if you are a person who is of retirement age and thinking about what financial planning looks like, adding money to the school budget is adding money to your most valuable asset. You need to do this as a town. Finally, I am deeply concerned about the idea of getting rid of the finance person in-house. Dr. Burnham, you essentially run a corporation that has a $23 million annual budget. You have a PhD, you have a team of people to support you who are all incredibly educated and well experienced in the field. None of you are finance people. We need a finance person. In my private life, I am a lawyer, I'm a criminal defense lawyer. And I will tell you over and over again, when I get cases that involve fraud or corruption or loss of funds, it starts when the person who mines the money either isn't there, isn't looking or on the take. We cannot afford to get rid of a finance manager. It is not responsible. So I appreciate the alternate thinking. I am grateful that you've thought about everything and you literally went back to the drawing board in one week. But getting rid of the finance manager is throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We need somebody who knows the money and somebody to mine our funds. So those are my comments. I hope that we can figure out a way to do this as pain free as possible. But I do think that absent an override or reaching out to state or local authorities for more money, we're going to have to make some of these cuts. And I think that you presented a clear eyed vision of how to do that. So, thank you.
I just have one more comment.
You may, go right ahead.
I apologize for speaking out of order here, but my earlier comments notwithstanding about the town budget, I, I just want to be crystal clear because a, a comment was made and I have not seen the communication from the chairman of the select board. The chairman of the select board nor the town manager passed the budget in the town of Lunenburg. Our process is such that the town manager brings forth a proposal to town meeting and town meeting approves that budget by a majority vote. That is the way we do things in Lunenburg. So any communication about a hard number is only so hard as the proposal that is brought forth to town meeting. And that proposal will be the subject of a hearing that the finance committee will hold. And the finance committee will make a recommendation on that budget as well. And then that budget will be brought to town meeting. And then that budget will be brought to town meeting, it will be discussed, and it will be passed. It is the voters in the town of Lunenburg. That approve the budget. Not the chairman of the Select Board. Not the town manager. Not anybody sitting on this stage. It's all of us. Thank you.
Good point, Mr. Beardenwell. Um. I know that. There are certain things that. Appear more evident. I I went through. I think we've covered just about everybody's thoughts. Um. That spoke with the exception. Of people speaking about the music positions. And I may have missed some, but I think I caught most of them. Um. I know that the music position at the high school. That decision, and please correct me if I'm wrong. That decision was based on. Student enrollment. The numbers are very low. The chorus and the band will not be affected at the high school. That is not where that cut would take place. That cut takes place strictly in electives. And probably one. Um. And people that know me and know my background, I am the last person in the world that would cut a music program. My husband was the band director at Lunenburg High School for quite a while. Before he was the band music director at. The middle school at the time. I taught music for 12 years. Music is close to my heart. We are keeping an eye on this. However. I would like a little look. If there is anything at all we can do. About the middle, the elementary school fifth grade band program. I understand what they're saying. Previously. Band started in Lunenburg here at grade six. I I don't know where it was when you were a kid, but it was mostly, my kids started in the sixth grade. I know the attempt to put it in a fifth grade was attempt to build the high school program. It might be worth a look-see. We have some very passionate kids and families. I I think one more round on that. In my thinking. Would be helpful. I'm. Like I say, I'm not the, I am the last person in the world to advocate cutting a music position. The reduction in the high school position, I don't believe will affect the program next year. Moving forward, we need to build these things back. But I I think we're okay next year. Um. I also would like to thank you for trying to figure out a way to keep the BCBA. Having been an elementary school teacher for a long time. I can't imagine one BCBA covering all four buildings and out-of-district placements. I think that's a really important position. I think most of us have heard quite a bit. From. Families about the athletic director and the athletic trainer. To me, those are cuts that perhaps we could talk about tonight. I don't know how anybody else feels about making that decision now, or if they want to look at. The alternatives a little bit longer.
So personally, I think that. Given the feedback that we've gotten from the public and just my own personal knowledge in terms of the role. And the nature of what those cuts would do from a disruption standpoint. Um, the elimination of middle school sports, which I. Have come to believe over recent years is incredibly important. And it's not a straight-line cut. What you cut in one area, you're gonna have to backfill in other, in other functions, stipended positions and whatnot. Um, I I. This is a very high priority for me to find a way to restore. Both of those positions. The athletic director position, just because of the upheaval of trying to run a sports program. You know, in middle and high school, the the trainer position. For two reasons. Number one is the compliance with MIAA. And the fact that. If we don't have a trainer. We're still gonna have to pay for trainers at games. And the athletic director is gonna spend an enormous amount of time chasing around. Trainers and EMTs and everybody else to to cover games, um, which is gonna undercut that service. So I I. I view this as the, you know, kind of a cat chasing its tail kind of issue, and it it's a very high priority for me. To restore both positions. That notwithstanding. I still don't have a clear line of sight around the alternative cuts associated with that. So that's certainly where I am leaning. But I, you know, relative, for example, to the the contracted services for maintenance and that sort of thing. I I think we should have the whole picture. Before we say we we definitely want to go down this path. The the other thing that I would add is. And the school committee members know this, I will not be able to participate on the seventh. So for whatever that's worth, you you've kind of heard my two cents, at least on that one.
Okay. Um, anyone else wanna? Comment on my comment? Mrs. Brzowski?
Um, yeah, I I. Can you hear me? I I agree with Peter on the, I'm not, I'm not ready to make individual decisions and say this position's safe, this position isn't. Um, it's pretty clear from both. Public outreach, the emails we got, public comment, um. And just general feeling, I think that the AD and the athletic trainer are both really vital positions in the town. Um, I think. Things would fall apart without an athletic director. I think middle school sports are really important and the thought of cutting middle school sports seems. It's a lot. Um, and that would be a lot to stomach, but I'm, I don't want to take individual votes on individual positions tonight unless there's an overwhelmingly good reason to do it. Um. But at the same time, I think that we need to look at the budget overall. Instead of just making decisions piecemeal like that, um. Because, you know, if if it comes down to budget director versus athletic trainer, those are. Those are difficult conversations that I think we need to. Keep having.
Okay, Mr. Layton.
Thank you. Uh, I think the superintendent's uh alternatives uh this week uh were improvements. Uh, it's dated last week, uh, that I thought the athletic director was an important position to keep. Um, so I'm glad that we're moving in that direction as well as the the training.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
I I think that, um, based on the feedback that I have received in the last week. That I would only feel comfortable. Making that decision after we have basically pinned it down. The one thing that I will point out. Is that we have three principles here. And those three principles cover all the schools in the entire district. And only one of the principals at the table. Has students that are serviced by the trainer and the athletic director. And so while a very high percentage of the students in the high school. And a slightly slower, smaller percentage in the middle school. Use the athletic trainer. The students at Turkey Hill and the primary school receive no benefit from it. And it, you know, like, there's a ton of different ways to come at. The determination about who to cut. But if you just apply, you know, utilitarian calculus and you say, who services the most number of people? Then, you know, that's not the only way to do it, but that's one way to do it. And so I'm. I don't want to cut that position. I don't want to cut either of those positions. But I do think that they have to stay on the table. And I think that once we've gotten to the point where there's. No more alternatives and no more places to go, we should think about that. But I I. I'm concerned ultimately that if we make the cuts. It will be cuts that. The public. Can't accept. And there may be some value in. Trying to find alternative sources of funding or trying to make alternative cuts to have the budget be something that's more palatable to the public.
Okay, so we're gonna table that for tonight. Um. But. The other thing I wanted to say is I didn't weigh in on the F, the finance director. We are. In, there is nothing else we can do but use the consulting group from now until the end of the year. Absolutely nothing else we can do. I'm very curious to see how that's gonna go. And if these people. Are as responsive as we hope they would be. That being said, I don't know how I feel about not having it as a line item in the budget for next year. Um, as a director, but, um, and we probably won't have enough use of those people. By the time we need to make that. Decision. But I just wanted to say that we'll see. What happens in the next few months as far as that goes. The IT business is working pretty well. As far as getting answers when we want answers, even though somebody isn't there every single day. So. That's my thought on that. So, um, Mrs. Brzowski, I see your hand again.
Um, sorry. So we, we took the posting down when Mrs. Whitmore accepted the position. By not posting it now, are we losing time and potential candidates by waiting?
So you might remember that I, uh, included in my superintendent report. I think it was the first meeting in January. Um. Information that was discussed at the. Uh, Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable Meeting. Um, they, they discussed an update that was provided. Through the Mass Association of. Of School Superintendents. That organization has an executive committee that meets with the commissioner. And they spoke with the commissioner. About the significant level of concern. Over the number of open. Business manager positions across the state. For school districts. And the lack of qualified people to fill them. And he said that he was working to find a different pathway to licensure. For individuals. To assume those roles. That's not an immediate fast fix, unfortunately. So I can tell you that we did not have very many applicants last time. Uh, no one that had anywhere near the qualification that the candidate. To whom we offered the job had.
The one who signed the contract and accepted it.
Can you say that again?
The one who signed the contract and accepted the job.
Yeah. There was a signed contract. I. I don't know that I can force somebody who doesn't want to come to work here to work here because they signed a contract, unfortunately. Um. And I don't imagine they'd be very happy for for too long if they were, they felt. Forced into. Honoring that, that contract they signed. Um. If it's the wish of the body, I can certainly post the position. Um, my concern is if I post the position and we find a candidate, then that takes a budget option off the table for you. So I don't know if you want to. Wait until March, or if you want me to post the position and and start looking now.
I think it only makes sense to wait a little bit. I don't think that the pool is going to change tremendously in the next month. Um, I think it's okay to wait a little bit. Other opinions?
This is Brian Layton. Uh, I just think that most people are probably finishing the school year, so that my thought was that July 1st, like I'd said, the July 1st date. Start date, so that gives us plenty of time if we want to. Post later on.
Mrs. Brzowski?
Um, I guess Dr. Burnham had a good point. It doesn't make sense, uh, and it's not fair to post a position for something that is on the table for being eliminated, so.
Okay. Thank you. So is that? The story tonight, as far as we can go on this, I believe. Um. Then we're going to go on to our next. We have. Committee reports, which will be brief. And then we have additional public comment if anybody wishes to make an additional comment. So does any, uh, Mr. Schoenbrini?
To know that the.
We can.
Can we table the committee reports? Cause all of these people are waiting.
That would be fine with me. Um, can we have a, I'll consider that a motion?
Motion to table all the committee reports that.
Mr. Schoenbrini, can you get a microphone?
Lots of seconds over there, so we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Brzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardenwell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo? Yes. Okay, so then we have public comment. Mrs. Gilman, you want to start us again?
Hi, everyone. Um. Thank you all and uh, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know this is not an easy conversation and I don't want to express. I don't want you to feel like I'm not expressing. I think you guys do amazing work with very little money and, you know. This is a wonderful place to live and I want to keep it a wonderful place to live, so it is a little bit disappointing. Coming and hearing just discussion about cuts. I was hoping for a little bit more of a rallying cry from the committee and from the leadership. To say, and you know, I'm not involved in town politics as much as I probably should be with two young children. But you know, I I really think we need to be bold, we need to be. You know, advocating for more money because the problem is we're gonna be right back here next year. Discussing the same exact thing if we don't do something really big. Very frustrating that the Board of Selectmen has already said, oh, don't, don't come with us to us with more money and don't worry, I will reach out to them and I will encourage people to do the same. But you know, I started a Facebook group like a week ago and I had almost 500 people join it, so I think it is. You know, doesn't mean just because the folks at the lake who I have nothing, you know, who have had a huge issue with the taxes. Issue, it doesn't mean that there aren't a silent majority out there of parents who are ready to support our school district. So I would just encourage the committee. Um, not to end the leadership, not to. Make it feel to people who want to take action like we're just taking this laying down. Because I think that it is very scary for many people to be involved. The people that care about this deeply. Who have come to me and I've seen many of them in town in different places and have told me how nervous they are about this. This isn't what they do. They don't come to meetings, they don't stand up here. You know, and and take the fire like you all have to, but they care about this stuff. And I just wouldn't want us to automatically think that there aren't people out there. Who would vote for an override or who wouldn't go to the selectmen's meeting and I, and I. You know, I've sat here for two and a half hours or three hours and you guys do this all the time, but. It's honestly a little frustrating because I want, I want more passion, more energy, more, um. More fire. We have wonderful teachers. They don't deserve to get, to have to live in a two and a half percent, you know. Increase every year, so I'll stop, but you know, that's, I would like to, you know, encourage people as well. Um, the state leadership, you know, I work for a state senator, I work for a state rep. Um, we need to be specific, we need to meet with them, we need to go and see them as a group and say, we need more special ed funding. Um, I was told that we don't see them very much as a district. I was told by more than one staff member that they don't know you. So that's a problem. Um, you guys need to go see them and talk to them. There's special ed circuit breaker money for specific situations. There's the regular special ed circuit breaker. I was told there's a a grant to apply for. For extenuating circumstances that was just open. Um, is the school applying for mass health reimbursement for the social workers that are doing mass health work? That is a, that is a pot of money that schools can get. Um, a lot of schools do, uh, social workers that work at agencies. Um, so if you're cutting social workers from the school, you could work with an agency. You know, Community Health Link, one of those agencies, they might come into the school and do work with students, especially if they can bill mass health. If there are kids. Who are on mass health or even on private insurance, I think that's something you should be looking at to address social workers being cut. Um, regional schools get transportation money. They get paid. As much as, not as much as they want, but it's a very, very big pot of money. Unregional schools don't, in my understanding, do not get much money for transportation. We should be knocking down our our legislators' doors. Why are we not getting paid? For transportation when Air Shirley gets whatever they need or 75%, 50% of their. Regional transportation paid for, so, um. I'll stop. Uh, but I, you know, I. I don't want any of this to be in a disrespectful, but I just, I feel like we we need some passion here because this is depressing.
Thank you. No, go ahead, Mary. If it's green.
Um, hi, Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road.
Um, hi, Mary Foyle, nine eight five Flat Hill Road, another meeting I thought I wasn't going to speak at, and here I am. Um, so for those who don't know, I am a resident, obviously, I'm a parent, I'm an employee. I'm our president of the Lunenburg Education Association, and I, relevant. Uh, I'm the chairperson for the Public Employee Committee that handles health insurance. Um, I'm not going to speak union-wise tonight, because I have to wrap my head around speaking for a lot of other people, and I'm not there yet. But I do want to speak as a parent and an employee who's been here for over twenty years. I've been in this case before, uh, I've been an employee who's been hit on this before. I, I'm looking at this year almost as it is what it is, my concern, and I appreciate the work so far. And I understand. We have a, a bit of the process to still go. But I'm really concerned over, and would love more details, as to what is our plan for FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven. I think if we're not actively looking at that as removing forward, we are really missing the forest through the trees, thank you.
We have anybody on Zoom, because I was going back and forth. I don't think so, so, go right ahead. Oh, all right, go right ahead.
Yeah, I didn't end Ron around that side of the room, uh, so Lou Franco, two fifty Arbor Street. I just want to clarify a couple of things, well, well, clarify one major thing. The Select Board hasn't said anything. The Chair, the Chairman of the Select Board sent an email. Okay, there are five members on that board. Uh, it's a body, so. The Select Board hasn't said anything. I'm here listening, I'm a, oh, by the way, people don't know, I'm the vice chair of the Select Board. I am a, I'm listening. I don't know what the solutions are, I'm here collecting data, I'm concerned. Uh, I'm a big supporter of public education. And I say that as a person who has a child who never attended Lunenburg Public Schools. He's in college now. I had, we had the good fortune of, and, and just, it was the right situation for him, I don't, I've got, I support the public schools. It was better for him to do what he did. That doesn't mean I ignore the public schools, and I agree with Mr. Skolimbrini that. Yes, uh, where the rubber meets the road, very pragmatically speaking, that is a good case to make, and I've thought about that too. That you make the case to people that their property values do increase when their school system is good. But there's a much more abstract, and to me. More important reason, and maybe this doesn't sell with a lot of people. But, our constitutional republic depends on an educated populace. And most people. Don't, cannot, they, they get their education from public schools. So we have to support the public schools, we are all. Customers of the public schools, the entire populace. And I robustly support them. Now, I don't know what that means, in terms of, you know, any kind of override talk or anything like that, I'm just telling you that I'm receptive, I'm listening. The Select Board's made up of five people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Um, once again, I'm Kara Herunkwitz, and I live at one sixty-five Gilchrist Street.
Is it green?
It is.
Oh, talking to a tenant, there we go, okay.
Um, so once again, I'm Kara Herunkwitz, and I live at one sixty-five Gilchrist Street. But I wanted to address some concerns from a student who's in the building, um, with some of the things that you guys said. With, um, maintenance, we're already having things that aren't being fixed appropriately, um. Ms. York, who's the Latin teacher, her room has had a leak in the ceiling for years, and they just keep replacing the tile. Um, so I don't think cutting maintenance should be the right move when we're already struggling to keep up with our maintenance. But, um, and another thing is, a lot of high school students are working in that extended day program. And I've seen a lot of them walking there to go to work, and so putting it at the primary school. Might not make sense. Um, for that reason, I understand the transportation, but would there be a way to even flip the busing so that. That way you're doing the same exact thing, but at the Turkey Hill, which is a walkable area from the high school. I wasn't totally sure about that, and then with the music electives. They have higher numbers than those band and chorus programs, and I'm a student who is in band and chorus. But there are kids who that means a lot to. I know people who want to go into sound recording stuff, so a class like Music Tech would be the perfect class for them. So, why are we cutting that, especially when. I highly doubt that the music program is eating up a whole lot of this budget, but it's just an easy thing to cut. Um, so that's kind of my two cents there, but.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening, Anna Lockwood, I live on nine one Main Street, I don't currently have children in the school district, so they were there for many years. Um, so, I waited for my comments because I wanted to see the updated presentation. Um, so, you know, Lunenburg has a long and well-established history of. Spending less and having still per, per pupil, and still having an amazing school district. And, um, and what's interesting is, I actually knew that when I moved to town about twenty years ago. And, and I, part of my due diligence in moving to town was, I was buying the local paper. And that was also the year that we are opening the, uh, primary, the library, the school, the, um, police, uh, the new police building. But, um, it was also the year that we started talking about the turf field, which was. A volunteer-based effort at the time, I know the town eventually did contribute to it. And that kind of ties into my next point, which is, Lunenburg has a very long history of volunteering and community participation. Um, one thing I know it was true. When my kids were at school, was there used to be, uh, a structure for parents to volunteer and to offer services. As part of the, the school day-to-day life, and I think perhaps. I, I'm not as intimate with the day-to-day operations of the school as I was, you know, eight years ago. But I don't know if that's something, it can be explored, that maybe we can go back to, you know, of course, we had COVID in the middle, right? Um, and, you know, parents used to help with specific tasks from the central office. Um, they used to offer classroom support, you know, the parent, uh. The classroom parent was always reaching out to us. Um, those are just some of the things, um, in a larger role, um. We, you know, like I said, we volunteers build the turf, the teen center. Uh, Wallace Playground was something that volunteers started. Powell Field, that, you know, Little League plays, so it can be a meaningful contribution to the schools. Um. Also expanding on the volunteer, I know you have a. Policy subcommittee, one thing I would make a suggestion is, perhaps you want to have a. Grant-writing subcommittee, we have a lot of people that are very talented in town. That volunteers that get grants. So hence, you know, the Parks Commission have received. A couple of grants, and, uh, it's been out through volunteer, we don't have paid staff. And if you create this, that, you know, that subcommittee. You, perhaps you're gonna have lasting people, you have a transition of people, but you have enough people, and that can be your main contact. With MSBA, because I did watch the school committee meeting where the superintendent said how frustrating it is. And I can imagine that, you know, not having the support staff, but perhaps your subcommittee could be that contact person there. Just as we have demonstrated, Parks as a volunteer board, we have submitted to many grants. Um, another thing that it's possible, it's gonna be my last suggestion. You know, I did hear this, the commentary with. DDPW, it doesn't have their trucks. Uh, their loader they requested for capital plan actually came behind your truck. Um, and I can see why the DPW director would suggest that. You know, you might want to look for your own. But what I hear is also the town losing some of its synergy on working together. So, sometimes we need to stay, take a step back, and it's not just who gets what truck, who gets what. You know, loader, but trying to work on some of these things that are town-wide. That we are too small to do independently, but together, you know, it'll be more useful, more. Bang for a buck, if you will, instead of getting three trucks, maybe we can get two. And make a better plan for snow, snow plowing. My last one is one that. I seen it, which is, you know, you actually brought it that you're reducing your, uh, maintenance staff. You know, we have a school facilities, and we have a town facilities. And they're both very small groups. Um, I do feel like that's a, that's somewhere that we should ex- explore some synergy between the two departments. And see how we can do it, because otherwise, we're gonna end up with six lawnmowers, instead of actually four that we need. Because we really only need three and one for redundance, so both departments, so. Just, you know, overall, look at some more structural changes, not just let's cut things, but. Those are my two cents, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, hi, uh, I am Sophia Mulay, again, at one thirty-nine Cove Road. Um, I have a few things to say, but I want to say thank you, um, for, A, just calling this meeting, it was labeled as an emergency meeting, um, and it's. Very good to inform the public, I know I'm glad that I'm being informed about all this stuff, and I also. Um, value it, and I want to, uh, recognize that, um, those on the school committee have a very difficult position here. Um, I want to thank everyone who spoke on behalf of the music program, that means a lot. Um, and so. I have a few more comments on that. So. Uh, about the electives, which Kara spoke a little bit about, um. They are more important than people may realize, I was put into a new elective that was just implemented this semester titled Music in Modern Media. And it goes into music technology and the history of music, uh, film, literacy, and all those things. Um, we had four people when that elective was implemented, and then on the four, uh, on the first day, eight people showed up. There is, uh, more interest, and it, uh, was not advertised in a great way, but there is more interest. Um, I plan on being a major in sound recording technology, which is music technology. Uh, in college, and I can say without a doubt that. We don't have too many resources for that in this school, um. It's not really a popular field, I'm not gonna lie, um. But there are small things like electives that do support those. Um, those people who are looking to maybe explore those things a little bit more. Um. As a, as a department, we don't really have something as concrete as like an athletic director, right? We don't have that higher-up person, we don't, we don't necessarily need that kind of person, um. But you need that athletic director to have middle school sports. And if you cut out the fifth grade band, you're basically projecting a setup. To cut the numbers of the participants in middle school music. So that cut would directly affect the numbers. Um, it's. In terms of cutting teacher positions, right, every department is losing a teacher. Um, whether that's from retirement, or they have to reduce a position. Um, which is difficult, however, the music department is the only department in the entire high school where there's actually only. One teacher for that subject. There is one high school music teacher, and there are two. Um, art teachers, other art teachers that are not for performing arts. There are visual art teachers, and every other department, um, in the high school has at least two other teachers. Um. Time?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe I'm the last one, uh, Michael Herunkwitz, one sixty-five Gilchrist Street, um, to talk again, and. Uh, again, thank you, uh, everyone from the superintendent's office, the school administration, and the school committee for. Putting this meeting together, and, uh, you know, trying to look at alternative options to the original proposed cuts. Um, however, I do want to reiterate that the fact that we're looking at proposed cuts. When we're in the bottom ten percent of per pupil expenditure, while still performing highly. Is just assinine, all right, there's no meat on the bone for us to be taking, and. I'm new to this, so I don't know if it's our job as citizens and parents to necessarily initiate a Prop Two and a Half override. Or if we're supposed to rely on the school committee, um, to, to, to work towards making those recommendations, and. Although I respect the opinions that have been expressed by the school committee. Um, I do take umbrage with the fact that five-member committee is deciding what the political appetite of this town is. When it comes to funding our schools, um, I think we should let the, the voters and the citizens of this town to decide. Um, because I think most of us realize how important having a strong public school system is. And I want to reiterate that not only are we at the lowest, um, the lower ten percent for, uh, per pupil expenditures. But we're doing that as a small school with low enrollment, so as you stated, we have certain fixed costs that are gonna be what they are regardless. So, I mean, we're, we're truly doing more with less, and I've lived in communities before that. They were threatened to lose their accreditation, not because of the level of education that they were giving, but because the school facilities had fallen into a state of disrepair. Because of under-investments for decades on end, and what had to happen, well, major, major capital investments to build new schools in order to save that. Like, if Lunenburg loses accreditation, our property values go to zero, folks, like, I mean, this is, this is a real, real threat. It's not just about, you know, our, our, our children and, and the, the community that we're raising them in. It's also about the investment that we've made, um, you know, and, and a lot of us are relying upon, so. Um, you know, I'm here to do whatever is necessary to try to, you know, move forward to find out how we can appropriately fund our schools. Both in the short term and the longer term, because as other people have said, we're gonna be in the same position. Fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven, and if we just keep taking cuts away, at what point do we no longer have a school? Do we no longer have a school community? Um, you know, I'd also advocate for, you know, looking at other options as well, you mentioned that the transportation fees have risen. Uh, exorbitantly, most communities are charging people a transportation fee, right? I, I, I mean, you know, there's no reason why the school as a whole should be, I mean, if parents want their kids to take the bus, you pay a fee, right? I mean, things like that, just getting creative to say, how can we increase revenues without losing necessary staff? There's no such thing as point six FTE, right? One person, thanks.
Thank you very much. I, I will respond to one thing that you did say, anybody can organize an override. It doesn't have to come from this group. Just like anybody can bring something to town meeting. Um, one woman decided that she didn't think we should be using those plastic reusable. Not-so-reusable bags at the grocery store, she got it changed. Anybody can bring an override. So, um, speak to like-minded people, go talk to the town manager, find out how to do it. That work?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Dr. Burnham?
I, I just want to take an opportunity to provide some additional information. Relative to some of the suggestions that were made earlier. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Mrs. Hanscom.
Sure.
Yeah, just, just to make some clarification, so that we all, um, know, I know that there was some things that were brought up, so we do, um, we do fill out. The necessary paperwork for Medicaid reimbursement, the last two years, we've been able to secure over a hundred thousand each year. Towards Medicaid reimbursement, but that money goes directly to the town, it does not come into our budgets at all, and that's, that's. That is something that's decided in Massachusetts per town, whether or not the town will take the Medicaid monies, or it goes back to the school district. So that's always been something, regional districts, I believe it does go back to the towns, but in particular towns, it goes back to the town directly.
Out for the chairman of the Finance Committee.
Um, transportation, we, we do get reimbursed for transportation through Circuit Breaker. Um, for our special education transportation, last year, that, that was to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars, so we do take advantage of that, and we do make sure that we fill out the appropriate paperwork. And we do make sure that we fill out the appropriate paperwork to get that Medicaid or to get the transportation reimbursement through Circuit Breaker that were allotted. Um, however, the extraordinary relief fund, we are not eligible for. Um, I've been a part of Circuit Breaker since its inception. That extraordinary relief fund, I've never been able to take advantage of in any district I've worked in. It's a hundred and, you have to have 125% additional expenses above your budgeted, um, special ed cost out of districts. So it's meant for those districts, a lot of bigger districts where they might get eight, 10, 15 students who move in um, to the district that they have to account for. Um, and so we do not qualify for the extraordinary relief fund. But I will continue to monitor that. And if anything changes on that front, I would definitely take advantage of it.
So I think that's something we should tell the legislators because that's what they told me when I asked them why we weren't getting more special ed money. They said, oh, but isn't there this new pot of money you should be getting? So I think that's part of what I'm suggesting conversations. Because, um, you know, legislative staff aren't, they don't know the details of this kind of stuff. They just know at the high level. Um, you know, to say back to them, hey, it's great that there's that fund, but Lunenburg doesn't qualify. Right? So why, why don't we qualify? Why aren't we changing the rules so that we do qualify? You know?
Okay. I'm not seeing any of the hands. I would entertain, wait a minute, did I forget anything? Nope. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. But before, before I let you vote on adjourning, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank our administrators who have come and have been supportive despite the fact we didn't ask them anything, but we appreciate you being here. Okay, now I'll take your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini? Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambol?
Yes.
Night, everyone.
Good night.